Okay, at this time, I'm going to call the handover school board meeting to order at 7:15. Our agenda review. Does anyone have anything they need to add or remove from our agenda tonight?
Don't need to have a non-public before appointing new members.
Yes, we've been informed that appointments of elected officials have to be done in public. So the interviewing and deliberation and the voting is done in public. Well, that's a good question. So does anyone have anything to add to the agenda? Yeah. Okay, at this point.
Oh, actually, Rick, I have a question, sorry. Would this be the meeting where we reselect the new approvers on the financial side?
Cut under my section, so. Don, and I'll put it on the line.
Thank you.
That was very passive aggressive. Okay, so at this point, we're going to move on to public comments. I'll give you three minutes to make any comments for items that are on the agenda. I respectfully request that members of the public state their name and address before commenting on the agenda items. Does anyone here in person have a comment? Does anyone on the Zoom call have a comment? If you do, please raise your hand and I'll turn your microphone on. So typically, we open it up to the public. We sometimes allow for items to have a discussion or questions from the public, depending on what the item is.
Because I tried to put the agenda, I was going to be the panel, assuming we're interviewing school board members, right?
Correct.
Right, so I'd like to see processes where you ask questions at the end, if that's possible.
So the way the regulations and our policy is the school board members will interview the candidates. We will then ask them to make comments and ask questions, and then we vote. If there's not an opportunity for the public to ask questions with the candidates.
So others speak out with private opinions?
Yes.
So I'd like to speak there.
Okay, is there a microphone?
No, it's just the microphone's here. If you want to stand, you can. If you want to sit, you can.
Yeah, just so that people at home can hear. And state your name and what town you're from.
And this is, last time, this was being recorded. I was here five years ago when there was the principal search, so. Like I said, with this.
Either one, whatever you're comfortable with, and it's CCTV is.
Broadcasting.
Broadcasting it, and then we're also on Zoom for people at home.
Okay, so my name is Joe Anderson, and working at Road Handover. And so what I'd like to hear from the candidates is I'd like to hear about how we're going to improve the academics of the school. The school, in my opinion, is very underperforming. Us and many other people have spent a lot of money sending it to private school, both the elementary as well as the middle and senior. You know, once again, I don't look at metrics or the metrics of the liquor pool, but you can use them to support what you're thinking. I saw graduation rate that was anywhere between 92 and 94 percent. It's extremely low, and I would love to be disabused if that's wrong and correct. In a town like this, we have a relatively low percentage of people that are economically disadvantaged. We do worry for us when I compare all the, now, I don't want to compare to New Hampshire, because my kids are not going to compete with New Hampshire. They're going to compete all over this country, okay? And I feel so strongly about this, and so do a lot of other people, that I'm sending my kids to private school. Now, I look at the numbers and I say to myself, okay, these are numbers, right? Could they be skewed? I do statistics, so that's something that could be. But I look at the experience now being at Handover High, and it's really quite frightening in my mind. The civics, the first civics used a very, I'm not even going to say, a very vile pop culture reference to demonstrate a principle. It was really amazing, and I'm not going to criticize that principal and that teacher. I think the teacher thing, I heard that a lot of senior teachers left, okay? And so I think that that's more of an emblematic, I think that the teachers are victims. I would never, I would talk to them face to face, like a person should. But that plus the fact that they spent the first few weeks talking without the handbook in civics, where the crossroad seventh grader is learning more than the ninth grader, okay? Where we talk about safe spaces, right? And so if somebody wants to talk about the free market and the positive life, being shouted down by two librarians dragging other students in to talk about how that student is wrong, and then when that student appropriately points out how a student shouldn't be debating the teacher, then the teacher then drags other people and other kids in to this conversation and talks about how that's okay. And then the student, to her credit, says, you know, I think I have a little time, says to her credit, says to the teacher, this is inappropriate. Teacher says, well, why is it inappropriate? She said, because there's a power imbalance here. So once again, I don't think that that's a, that in and of itself is not, I wouldn't want to have those librarians punished. Or no way to think about it, I'm going to talk to them. But it's emblematic of a district that is sick and it needs to be reformed. I was here five years ago for the principal search, don't want to be litigate that. But the school board basically said, you know, you're right, you lost your trust. I don't think it really got packed. I think everybody here works very hard, not including anybody here. And I just wonder how much of the academics we're really focusing on.
So, yeah, so your three minutes are up, so I have a question for you. Are you talking academics at the race school or?
All of, all of, I mean, we can control the race school and middle school because I spend the money. I mean, I don't really make a lot. I have a federal salary, but I send whatever I have to Crossroads. Crossroads was amazing. We can do the same here, but why? Do teachers control, like, what happened to that principal? I'm just using, for example, the principal that was hired after Mr. Carter. She was ran out of school, and from what I heard, the teachers ran her out. I couldn't, please tell me, please give me the story. And once again, the last question I have for you is, you know, once again, please disabuse me of anything that's false. Last question I have, if I don't have a curriculum, does anyone plan for a curriculum? The principal candidate that was talking about having a curriculum was voted down, and it wasn't clear why that was, okay? So those are my points. I really want to hear about academics. I want to hear how our kids are going to compete. I want to hear how this is going to happen. And I want to know that what we experienced in ninth grade may be anonymous. I don't think that they are, okay? And once again, I'll give you specifics, not to get people into trouble, that's not, because I don't blame them. I blame the top. I blame you, Mr. Masters, okay? And you're on the phone, okay?
Okay, we're not going to allow disparaging remarks.
I'm not, I'm not.
You just made a disparaging remark, so.
Well, if he, if he answers my email back from June, I'd be happy to talk to him face to face.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public? Anyone on Zoom? I see no one with raised hands, so at this point, we're going to move on to.
My name is Karen Anderson. I am the wife of Joe. We have three children who go to the school, or are part of the school district that happens on the different schools. And just to echo the need for a curriculum specialist, and I'm asking you guys, please, having my daughter in the high school right now, I've talked to many of the teachers. They are, we had discussions with them, and they've told me that, you know, part of their, you know, here has been a, that a lot of teachers have left. And there are some holes that they're trying to fill, and that they are looking for direction. The social studies teacher told me that specifically. The English teacher, you know, has been getting frustrated with my daughter because of the wealth of knowledge that she got from Crossroads. There are so many teachers there. If you guys need to talk to people about, like, you know, how to form a good curriculum. You know, I just think there needs to be a vision, you know? And I can tell you, the English teacher actually has a nickname for my daughter. She calls her Crossroads because she always knows the answer. She's helping to teach the other kids too. And I get upset by it because every kid should have like that experience. And he's telling me that a lot of the kids in the class are jealous of her, and they don't deserve to be jealous. They shouldn't have that same experience. And we confronted this a couple of years ago, and nothing has changed. If anything, I think it's gotten worse. I think our focus is so much on certain marginalized groups. When in actuality, we are marginalizing our intellect here and we're focused so much on other things than actually making these kids, like throwing facts at them. Again, in social studies, they're surveying like 3,000 years. Go into the depths of things a little bit more, and don't spend three weeks on the student handbook. And have the kids write an essay on that. Give them something that's really going to empower them and give them a future. But anyways, yes, we are here because we want to hear what the board is going to do to help push our curriculum way above average, because we are a very special group. We are very high achieving parents who all have the same desires for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Johnson, can you be there to defend my 14-year-old when she talks about the free market? Since we're talking about non-teenning people, I'd love for you to be there. She would like to be there.
Thank you. At this point, we're going to move on to the principal's report. Lauren?
Good evening, everyone. It's been a while since we've all been together in person. It's great to see so many faces here in person for this meeting today. Thank you all for being here. Really appreciate that. I'm going to roll through my updates, and then at the end, I would be happy to take any questions from the board. I'll start with an enrollment update for this evening. We currently have 497 students enrolled, registered here at the Race School, which is up from last month's report, where I named 492 students. So we have gained some students in our school community. In kindergarten, we went from 83 students to 84 students. In first grade, from 80 to 81. In second grade, from 73 to 76. In third grade, from 76 to 77. In fourth grade, from 86 to 85. And fifth grade, it stayed at 94 students. I did want to highlight that we still have several open positions here at the Race School. We're looking for interventionists, folks to work one-on-one with some of our students throughout the course of the school day. We're looking for a point four part-time Spanish teacher. Someone to work at one of our local childcare centers for two days a week. And you may have seen my postings in the listserv. I would encourage you to pass along the word to anybody that you may feel is in position here at the Race School. We're welcoming new team members.
Rick, can you hear us? Everyone has been muted, including Lauren.
Thanks, Kim. We're working on it.
When you just unmuted yourself, Lauren, we could hear you, just so you know.
All right, everyone.
Can you hear us now? Yeah, I can hear us good.
All right, thank you. I'm not sure what you heard or what you didn't hear, so I'm going to start with open positions again, quickly. Interventionists, one-on-ones, a point four part-time Spanish position. Someone to work at one of our local childcare centers for two days a week in the morning. And just highlighting that I will put this in the listserv every so often for folks to be able to have links to apply. And we encourage applications from interested people in our community. Several folks asked about the theme for this year, since we had a uniting theme of red galaxy last year. But we don't have the same level of theme this year. We are thinking about putting our best foot forward. And those of you who are here this evening inside the school, you may notice that there are flip flops around the building to symbolize putting our best foot forward this year. For our community goal, I would like to highlight some of the things that we're doing this year here at the Race School. As I spoke about in our last meeting, I highlighted some training that occurred over the summer for our educational assistants, as well as our classroom teachers and other certified staff here at the Race School around responsive classrooms for beliefs. In order to be successful in and out of school, students need to learn a set of social and emotional competencies. Cooperation, assertiveness, responsibility, empathy, and self-control, as well as a set of academic competencies, an academic mindset, perseverance, learning strategies, and other academic behaviors. Therefore, this year, as a school, we're uniting around this. Teachers, administrators, educational assistants, and building level coordinators will teach, practice, reinforce, and demonstrate responsive classroom routines in the areas of engaging academics, designing and delivering high-quality, rigorous, and engaging instructions. Positive community, creating a safe, predictable, joyful, inclusive classroom, where all students have a sense of belonging and significance. Developmentally responsive teaching, responding to students' individual, cultural, and developmental learning needs and strengths. As well as effective management, creating a calm, orderly environment that promotes autonomy and allows students to focus on learning. Right now, the associate principal, Nan Parsons, and I are collecting data. We've visited classrooms together to calibrate our data collection, and in the following weeks, we will continue to do so. The next step will be to begin our coaching of our faculty, who will be divided between us. We will engage in coaching cycles with each faculty member throughout the course of the year. This is really exciting work for us. In the area of curriculum, as Robin will likely detail in her report, we had a wonderful afternoon with our colleagues at the Marion Cross School today. The primary goals of this time were to make collegial connections with our colleagues in our sister elementary school across the river, with an eye toward future collaboration in curriculum. To hear about the short-term and long-term curriculum goals. And to hear from a couple Marion Cross School and Race School grade-level teams about the curriculum writing process. It was a wonderful opportunity today to rekindle the relationship between our two elementary schools in SAU 70. Additionally, we're doing work on our mission, vision, and values. Last week, our staff, including educational assistants, joined together to begin the important work of recalibrating our mission, vision, and values. Pre-pandemic, the Networks Committee, which is an advisory committee to the administration, began this work at a very micro level with one representative from each school team working to examine our currently stated mission, vision, and values, and discussing where we've been, where we are, and who we want to be at the Race School. After putting this work on pause for COVID, we are now joining back together and expanding the conversation to all staff. It will broaden this even more to our stakeholder groups, including the community, families, the school board, and our students. This is time-consuming and thought-provoking foundational work, but will ultimately lead to a shared understanding of why we do what we do and what we stand for. This understanding will help guide our decision-making across all areas of our work. At the last meeting, I let you know that I did not have comparative results from the state around our statewide assessment system data. I received an email from the New Hampshire Department of Education that stated at this time, only state-level users can access the SAS statewide assessment system statewide scores. When I'm able to share the full data picture, including the comparative data, I will do so. And finally, a quick reflection on the start of school. I will share that the start of school has been one that has been challenging and exciting, but for different reasons from last year. On one hand, as I've just articulated, we have some important and exciting work that we are already engaging in less than three weeks into the school year. Continuous improvement is mentally and emotionally challenging. And additionally, there is a sense of mourning of what we thought the beginning of this school year would look like. When we parted ways for the summer, we all believed that improving science and health measures, including vaccinations, could lead to a more normal kind of opening. While some restrictions have been eased based on local data and recommendations, we find ourselves very much in a similar place as where we ended last year. At the end of last year, we celebrated making it through an entire school year without any major disruptions in-person learning with a remote option. We still celebrate our return to school and in-person learning for all of our students this year. But we find ourselves teaching, talking, meeting, and working behind masks. Our quote-unquote "normal" routines are still disrupted by the need for physical distancing and mask-wearing. And teaching from behind a mask is challenging. However, we celebrate our continued success, perseverance, resilience, and we will await the day when students can see us, hear us, and interact with us without a physical barrier between us. This year will continue to require flexibility, understanding, and support for all of the additional COVID layers that school staff and our community must contend with on a daily basis. We know that everybody, especially the community, is working extraordinarily hard. That being said, I share my monthly gratitude with the community for your support and understanding during this continued challenge time, challenging time. I share my gratitude for each and every member of the Race School team as well, who show up each day for our students, smiling with their eyes and with love in their hearts for the students that they care so deeply about. We will all continue to keep our eyes towards a more normal future while working day-to-day for you all, our students, at the end of this. Thank you.
Busting situation.
I'm sorry.
Busting situation, kids getting here on time, et cetera, et cetera.
We're going to be discussing that. If you didn't do that online, Jamie's going to be discussing that in her report further on in the meeting.
Any other questions for Lauren?
I think it's sort of, okay. Yes, John. Sort of for Lauren, but it might be more of a facilities question. I'm curious about the renovations to the entryway for Wincetts. I know that was talked about last year, and I thought that was being done this summer, and I just wanted to see if anyone else.
That's in my section, which is, I don't know what number two, Mary.
Okay.
Jamie, there's a big time right now.
I thought so. Thank you.
Any other Lauren questions? Thank you, Lauren. We're moving on to budget guidelines. Jamie, is that you or Kim?
I think Kim was going to have me run a point, just because she is remote. And I have to admit that I was just on the government school board, looking at her, to prevent you from questioning questions.
If you have to speak louder, I don't think people at home can.
I know. It's really, that's a first, for somebody to tell me I'm not loud enough. I'm usually told I'm too loud.
Wow, hi, everybody. Welcome back. So posted on board docs for you to review was the handover quick model version two, done on August 17, which was reviewed with the budget committee at a kickoff meeting. We did discuss this at the last meeting that we held, when we looked at the draft of the guidelines that had been discussed by the principal and the budget committee members, along with Chair Hartman, who's chair of the budget committee, and myself, the superintendent. If you take a look at the quick model that's projected, that's projected based on the ratification of the budget for 2122. And then we roll forward what we know to be true and any changes that we may have garnered since it was built back in December and ratified in January of 2021. And the biggest change, obviously, with this this year is that we needed to carve out the sixth grade tuition. So we did all of that, and we came out with a projected early potential increase of year-over-year budget of 3.28 percent. Now, at our meeting, we discussed that that percentage will most likely come in a bit lower due to the fact that the salaries and benefits that are being shown here are done based on the 2021 projected budget in the 2122 census. And we had a lot of turnover, as has been mentioned, throughout this meeting and all of our other meetings. So that's just a quick overview of the quick model and, you know, where we were and what we looked at. Also posted for your review is the handover draft budget guidelines, which we discussed at our last meeting. And they're up for review and ratification by vote tonight. The guidelines we use when we're building all the different sections of the budget to try to stay within a certain range. And so all of the different pieces here have not changed. And at the end of all of this, the Handover Budget Committee is recommending that we stay within a guideline. I think it's 3.25 percent or less. And we have the or less, because as we start to build the budget, we will recognize some of the savings probably from the personnel turnover. So I don't know if there's any exact questions, or Chair Hartman of the Budget Committee would like to add anything.
Thanks, Jamie, and I am indeed have a sore throat, so I appreciate Jamie taking the lead on that. And that's also why I'm joining remotely tonight. So I think if you look at the second page of the guidelines, the only thing that I would add is that the the quick model or the kind of Excel spreadsheet that you see in the first document, the reason why we do a quick model, just as a refresher, because there's some folks in the room who are newer. You know, we do that just to kind of see what a status quo is. What are some of those known knowns that we know are going to occur and that we really probably don't have any real discretion over? Things in a typical year would kind of be what our union contract percent-based increases would be, et cetera, or what we know is going to happen with either health insurance or retirement, things like that. So we know kind of what our baseline status quo is. One thing that Jamie, I don't think, mentioned, but I do want to add is that the budget committee also looked, in addition to status quo, kind of what are some of the early identified strategic initiatives that we would like to consider when thinking about what a budget cap or corridor would be? And so those are outlined in summary, and of course, this isn't the only things. And but just to give you a flavor of that discussion, there are three bullet points that we discussed. One is, and actually, as I heard with Lauren explaining our enrollment, there, every number, I feel like I keep hearing, the number ticks higher and higher. So as we see increases in our enrollment, you know, do we need to think about a 28th teacher or not? So I think it's a question, and we typically look at enrollment as a budget committee after October. So just to give you a sense of that, the second kind of either strategic initiative or something different from status quo would be additional reading and writing specialists, and if there are any questions on that, I'm sure Lauren can elaborate. And then the third is, and actually, I heard this in our public comment, so hopefully, this is some welcome news. But as we continue to look at curriculum development, we definitely want to include some improvements in curriculum development. And actually, in our budget committee, there was a discussion about the partnership with Marion Cross to improve the math curriculum program in particular. And actually, in our budget committee, there was a discussion about the partnership with Marion Cross to improve the math curriculum program in particular. But, you know, there, that is just kind of to give you a flavor of maybe what things might be coming in the budget. But as we know, with time, things change, right? So I just wanted to make sure folks were aware of those initiatives. Thanks.
Thank you, Kim. Hope you feel better. Jamie?
And just to follow up, good point, Kim. Sorry, I look at these so much, I forget to explain what is, you know, new and maybe outside of what we would normally have included. So I'll just remind everybody that with the salary and benefit lines, specifically the salary lines here, we are in negotiations with two of our unions, the Teachers Union and the Support Staff Union. And so in the quick model, we did project into it costs of steps that are available based on an updated census. That dollar amount will not be built into the budget because in the state of New Hampshire, any negotiated contracts have to be voted separately from the main budget. So those dollar amounts will actually be carved out and be put on their own warrant art. We've included it here for reference so that it will give us an idea of what we might be looking at should a settlement be ratified.
We want to have a question for Jamie or Kim regarding our budget guidelines?
Yes. It's a related question prompted by the budget. I'm more specific to Lauren. Lauren, if the 28th teacher is hired for next year, do we have the physical space here to accommodate?
What is the question? If that is a priority that we deem necessary by enrollment, we will make it work. Yes.
Still, that's sort of, I'm just wondering what space to imagine using.
I have a really big imagination. So we do have, we have many classrooms in the school, and some of those classrooms are used for things that aren't just classes in a traditional sense. So we do have spaces that we could potentially repurpose, which would be dislocating some other program inside the school to a different area. But that would be something that I would be working with my staff around to make sure that we could accommodate all of those needs.
And I'll note that with the strategic planning group kicking off, this discussion came up about facilities. And it'll be something that we're gonna be looking at over the next couple of years because we all have space, potential constraints that we'll face. Any other kinds of questions for budgets? Hey, moving on to custodial and maintenance update. So this may be where Ben gets his question, yes.
Well, that's fine. So there's a few things to discuss tonight with regards to custodial maintenance. With regards to the projects, we ratified putting the redesign of the entryway space back into this year's budget, the 2122 budget. So we did put monies back in in order to accomplish that. With all the other projects that we were embarking on at all the different locations, we were not shovel-ready to embark on that one in this summer and get it completed. Okay? So it hasn't gone by the wayside. We need to re-meet with the initial architect who came in, and that was Lauren and her staff about the redesign. We also thought, because of the amount of projects that were going on, that in the cost increase of all materials and some of the materials that are hard to come by, that it might be more prudent to wait until spring to put that out to bed. So so it hasn't gone away. The money's still in the budget. We need to re-meet with the architect with everything going on this summer in order to get ready to reopen the schools. We could not delay this.
If that project really is to be done during a weekend or a school break or something.
Yeah, it's a major undertaking with the topic. Because you're, you're infrastructural.
So we would, it cannot be done most weeks or so.
Yeah. Maybe parts of it then could be, like some of the prep work perhaps. But the structural pieces of what they're envisioning, it would be best to do right after we close school in June, you know, whatever the date is, to kick it off on that date. I would envision it would probably take, just based on the designs that I saw, probably at least a month. Yeah.
So if it's next summer, would that cause problems with all the after-school summer?
I think we could work through that just because there are so many entrances to this school, the way and the manner in which it was designed, that we would be able to work on it.
Quick follow-up, just because I remember these discussions were all last spring and winter. And I'm looking at it, was the carpet replaced?
Yeah.
It looks awful now. Okay, good. Thank you. Haven't been in here.
Yes, that was one of our projects, all brand-new carpet and little friends and everything in this room, which was a project to get done as well. And they all, all of the vendors this summer were just very honest, but we had some really, I'd say, 10 years conversations with someone.
I'm not sure what's permissible in terms of what happens when we make big renovations like that. But is there a way perhaps to, in that renovation, create some sort of like flexible space that could potentially be used for a classroom if it's needed?
Probably not in that location of where that's going to occur because it's the entry, it's the entry went. But if we run into a need such as that, I think there are other options that we have that we could accommodate, even if it was something that hadn't happened quickly. But but with building their space, that's a really, it's a very involved permitting process. Because, you know, you're dealing with, there are standards for New Hampshire for, you know, for building space for students.
More than I do. I'm nodding.
Yeah. And, you know, and plus all the permitting because you're dealing with Fire Marshal's Office, right? And you're dealing with the DOE and you're dealing, so there's a lot to it. I think once we start to look at the enrollments as we're starting to build the budget, if we have a realization that we think this is going to be something long-term that's going to necessitate some kind of additional space like that, that probably by December or January, we should embark on that discussion so that we can see what all of our options are, both short-term and long-term. But yeah, it's a, that's, it's a process to get permitting and approvals and all of that done. You know, and then figuring out what the best space is perhaps coming off of this building, right? Because of the design, I think was changed a couple of times. Jamie? Okay. Custodial.
Rick, can I add to that? Did I get a yes? I could only see Jamie. Okay, so so two questions. So I guess one comment, one thing that I did not add because we have been discussing this in the SAU. And the SAU budget gets assessed in, both in Dresden and in Hanover as part of the SAU assessment. And it might actually appear in the Hanover budget in itself, but we've been talking about, and we talked about in Dresden, district-wide building and grounds audit. And to kind of understand where our needs as, particularly in Dresden, as a large debt is retiring in a couple of years, we want to be ready to make those kind of large-dollar capital investments where we need to. Potentially, there are areas where we have deferred maintenance. And so we wanted to make sure that we are kind of ahead of the game before that retirement actually rolls off. So we're in, you know, kind of, I know Jamie, it's something Jamie's looking into and to figure out what budget it's in. But at some point, it would kind of roll in, either if it's through the SAU assessment or actually in the Hanover budget itself, if it's just kind of for the Ray School building. And then the other, more of a question, and maybe Jamie or Lauren can kind of help me on the history of this because this is definitely before my time, but I understand that, you know, we aren't at total capacity, max enrollment that the Ray School has ever been. I believe enrollment has been higher in the past. And so I think, you know, I maybe just if that, if we can confirm that that's the case, and if it is the case, you know, I think that kind of maybe gives us another sense of how we can kind of interpret our existing facilities.
So I don't have the number stuck in my head. I think we've been as high as 530, 535 maybe. And it was quite some time ago, prior to me. But I do believe at that point in time, Kim, we had, I hate to use the word trailers, but we had external pods, right? That were brought in to accommodate the larger class sizes. And I don't know what grades were being accommodated in the pods because it was quite some time ago. I'm thinking eight years ago at least. No, more than that? Really? How long ago? 20?
I think my daughter was in the second grade in the trailer.
Oh, my.
Maybe the third.
Long time ago.
She was.
And maybe that's the reason why we have the Richmond Middle School with sixth graders. So, okay. Thank you.
And Kim, I will pull up that data. I'm trying to find it in my drive and not doing so very quickly. So I will find that data and we can talk about it in the future as well.
The data is reported in the Dresden Hanover budget annual report that goes out in the back. It shows all the historical numbers, I think of the class sizes across most of the Hanover Dresden schools.
Good. Lauren, remind me, what are we at now? 490?
494. We are at 497.
An ultimate issue of the definition of acceptable class sizes and shrinking gradually.
It is a policy.
Yeah, we changed the policy a couple of years ago based on the grades of the different max class sizes.
Right, so we give you the, we meant the point. Here were students.
Yeah.
Okay. So custodial.
Yes.
Moving right on. Custodial has been a challenge for at least a year here and at other locations. We have been running crews with missing FTEs at the Dresden High School, I think, for three years at least. And we've been running, at Richard Middle School's been complete. We've been running here mostly complete up until a couple of transfer, transfers were made due to various reasons. So we thought we were going to be okay to open school and then had a, had a transfer that was necessary and also had somebody resign right, right on August 31st. So Tony and I had been discussing with a few of some of the local folks who do that type of work. And we have used them like a year or two ago when we were running short in Noll, on the other side of the road. So we talked to a few of them and everybody in the upper alley, it seems, is having terrible difficulties hiring in certain types of job trade, including custodial maintenance, HVAC, I mean bus driving, regular driving, pretty much, you know, waitressing, everything, okay? And we're experiencing that as well. So in speaking to the superintendent, because we then had an emergency need, we went back out to some of the companies and found one that could accommodate us beginning September 20th with an outsourcing of the evening cleaning duties here at the Ray School. The daytime custodian will remain in place, and he has been here the longest amount of time, at least 15, 16 years. So we feel that this is the best course of action at this point in time for us to be able to have continuing operations that are settled. And we are bringing this information to you for two reasons. One, it's an emergency and we really think it's the right thing to do. The second reason is because of the potential length of the contract. We have the contract written through December 31st, okay, because it's a brand-new contract. It does have a monthly renewal clause that we can back out of if we're not, if it's not going. So it has a potential cost of more than $100,000. And in our purchasing policy, we are to make known to the school board when we enter into any contracts above that number. The face value of the contract as stated is below that, but if we continue this for the whole entire year, it will go above that. Okay? The good news, however, is that it will be below what the initial budgeted cost was for all of the FTEs that we have in the budget. Now to the workers. None of our present workers will lose their job. They will be kept whole. We are transferring them. We have two remaining workers here. We will be transferring both of them to the Dresden School District on the same exact hours, shift, rate of pay, benefits, everything they have here. The only thing that will change is the location of where they report to work. And what that allows us to do is to make both of the crews at the Hanover High School and Richard Middle School full again. It also helps to cut down on, when you have a very small crew, if people have, you know, family needs or have to be out or what have you, it's hard for us to be able to send somebody from somewhere else where we're shorthanded to cover. So by using an outsourced vendor, if there's any need for coverage on nights, then they will fill that need. And we won't be left short, which is what has been happening historically everywhere for quite some time. So that's what's going on in the facility of them. Maintenance room is fine. We're, we're at full capacity there. They've been very, very busy getting the schools in line to start and open. I think we had a pretty good opening. The crew here at the Ray School has been stepping up and working a lot of extra hours as they have at the Hanover High School and getting the job done. But it's not a complete job that we would normally do if we had a full company. So that's my update on custodial maintenance operations for tonight.
So a couple of questions. One, I don't see this in the required action, so we don't need to vote on it.
You do not need to vote on, no, but we do need to notify you of that. I will have to ask the superintendent to sign instead of myself.
Okay. Second, the ACP personnel are not going to be here when the children are here. Is that correct?
Correct, but they still have to follow all state and federal guidelines per New Hampshire law, and that is with, that is a part of the contract.
That is, that's what I was looking for in like the cleaning products and everything they use are going to be.
Yes, they're embedded by us and in compliance with everything that we do.
And do we need, the reason I was asking about when they're here, do they need background checks?
Yes, yes, all of that. They do finger press that. They have to be checked exactly the same as any other actual district employee will be. That's a New Hampshire law.
Got it.
So will the district be still attempting to hire people with a start date of January, or have we stopped the hiring effort?
We haven't decided that at this point in time. I think we'll need to look at what the environment looks like and how well it's going with them. So this has been something that's been ongoing for like years with custodial help, you know, rotating through. So I don't know the answer to that, Ben, tonight.
And I think it'll be probably taken off of the strategic plan. And I think it'll be probably taking up some strategic planning, looking at, you know, opportunities to outsource for cost savings without impacting current employees.
Right. So and we are keeping our our day custodian, who is also considered lead custodium. Who will be, you know, working with their lead in order to have a seamless operation. So we're not giving up on all of our, you know, presence here.
And we're pushing the comments. Thank you, Jenny. So. We are moving into some uncertain territory. We, I don't think we were having interviewed the two open divisions for. School board members. We lost Brittany James in. August, she took her job or moved to Washington DC. We were sad to see her go and then. Two weeks ago, it was notified that Kelly McConnell, who served on our school boards for six and a half years. Has taken a long term substitute teaching job with the high school. And because of regulations and policies, she has to step down from the board and I just wanted to thank her for. Six and a half years of service, but we're glad you're staying around and teaching in the high school. So the. The way the state of New Hampshire requires nominations to be vetted for. Elected positions such as school boards is we have to do it completely in the public. So. Each member or each nominee will bring them up just in the order that they're listed here in my board docs. So have up to two minutes to make any opening remarks and then I'll turn it over to the school board to ask questions for up to three minutes. And then we'll bring the next candidate up. At the end of this section, we'll move into business requiring action. We'll move through all the. Expenditure approvals, et cetera, and then we'll have school board members nominate a candidate for one of the positions. We will then open it up for discussion and we will take a vote until we have two members still in those two positions. I'll just mention. Because we have to do this in public. Matters which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person. Should shall not be discussed, however, because we are required to do this in public, I just asked everyone to be mindful of comments. Or any potential disper- reputational issues, so. At this point, anyone have any question, Ben?
I have a clarifying one. So at the end, you know, we have five candidates, choose them two. Is it which two people do we want or is it you, person A, yes, you, person B?
We'll have a board member move a candidate. We'll then have discussion, then we'll just do a normal vote. If we don't get a. Majority vote, we move on for another motion.
And then I know we have four people.
We have. Kim can vote from, she doesn't have towards the floor, but I believe she can vote for the candidate. So. So we have five candidates, Olivia Joss. Deb Nelson. Kevin Canoe. Lenick. Tim Lenick, thank you, and. Stuart Bray. Great, okay, so that's the order we're going to go in and then just randomly have they got put into the board doc. So Olivia, if you'd love to go first. If you just come up and get either sit down or stand and if you have any comments on why you want to serve on the board and then we'll open it up to questions.
All right, do I start the screen? Do I look at you?
Look at us.
All right. Well, hello, my name's Olivia. First and foremost, thank you all of you and all of you for your service over this pandemic. I sincerely, obviously, I am completely floored by the fact that my kids were in school all of last. But more to me, why I'm here, well. My interest is that I have two kids here at the Ray School. And I'm particularly interested in the realm of diversity and inclusion. Myself, I'm Latina, grew up in Chile, live here in the US. Quite honestly, comparing my education that I received in Chile to what I see here, I am just in awe. I think this is spectacular. There's always room for improvement and this is why I want to be part of this community. When it comes down to diversity and inclusion, these are some perhaps more private matters, but the reality is that if I don't speak up on it. I will be impacting the lives of other children who perhaps are going through the same rap. I have a child who is transgender at the Ray School and has been completely supported. And I want to continue to pave the road and help pave the road for transgender, nonconforming. Children as they go through our school system. Furthermore, I'm in the process, my husband and I are in the process of adopting a child, a Burundi. And quite honestly, we know how much race can be a topic of conversation and I want to be part of that conversation. A minute ago. Now, those are my own personal, very selfish reasons why I want to be part of this committee, because I think that I can contribute to that. But furthermore, I think why I can actually be useful to you here in the committee. Is because my expertise is in compensation, setting salaries, negotiations and helping budgets and all the side of. Union conversations and negotiations. While I don't do that anymore, I actually run a company called Salary Coaching for Women. Where we help women all over the world get paid what they deserve. I used to work as a senior compensation analyst at Dartmouth, in which I actually oversaw SBIU union negotiations and stuff. All sorts of salaries, which I know is a topic of conversation, but. Can really be of service and use to the board.
Thank you very much. So at this point, questions?
I think so should be for everyone who's coming. Are you aware that you will be on more than one board?
Right now.
Many of us do not know that coming on, so everyone, it's not just us. You'll do stuff at the middle school, high school, you'll run several subcommittees, there will be work nine to five time meetings, some of the person. So just prepare yourselves for all of that.
I'm ready.
My question slash statement.
Ready, bring it up.
Not everyone knew that before.
Yeah, so it's just a clarify of them. So there are a number of committees that. Number of committees that we all sit on and because of Kelly and Brittany stepping down. We're going to be expecting the candidates who get selected to go in those spots, so. It's not just one meeting a month, which I think everyone was a little shocked when we all joined the board. So what grade are your children?
My son was in second grade and my daughter is in fourth grade. And my incoming child will be probably. Next year, the following year, is going to be somewhere in the Ray School, kindergarten, fourth grade.
It's exciting, thank you. And. You are.
I do, yeah. So you mentioned your personal reasons for really thinking about diversity, equity and inclusion. And I just wondered if you want a chance to talk a little bit more about. You know, how you see those relating to the job, the school board. Right, so what do you think the board is as a school board in terms of diversity and inclusion? I think that. The role of the board and really truly where I would like to help is to just generate further awareness. I quite sincerely think that the board is doing a phenomenal job on all fronts, but I've told Lauren many times. I still can't believe the school is open in the middle of the pandemic. But I think that. You only have so many hours in the day, right, in so many committees that you're already part of. I think that where I can help, and this is actually something that I've already been doing. Is bringing information, information and just bringing in awareness, like for example, before my son started kindergarten. So Lou, he knew he was transgender. At three years old and since then, he's been a boy. So I am fortunate that I have a team of staff members that helped me out and what we did, we went on a saga. Well, not saga, but like. We surveyed seven hundred elementary schools across the country. To understand what it is that schools are doing when it comes down to bathrooms. And figuring out like, okay, if you identify as a boy, what are you doing when it comes down to bathrooms and restaurants and such? Because that's a problem that my child is prone to fix. So I think I'm very good. At getting creative when it comes down to facilitating answers and not just going with an opinion that says. We should be doing this and make a grand statement about it. It's like, okay, what is the information? What is everybody else doing? That resolves the problems that were, yeah.
I'm just letting you know, five minutes left, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next question.
Good evening, I'm Deb Nelson and as you can tell maybe by my voice. I have almost thirty years plus experience as a teacher. And I am now retired, which means that I can actually do the job that I was elected to do when my youngest child was an infant. And that was to serve on the Hanover Dresden School Board. And at that point, we were hiring a principal, a superintendent. It was a little overwhelming and I was working full time, but I do know. How many different board meetings there are in this job. But the reason that in addition to the letter that I sent, Rick, which I assume we shared with all of you, sorry. Is I I think there are three qualities that I can bring to the board. And one of them is that thirty plus years of teaching experience. Many of them at the honors and AP level. Dealing with subjects that have most recently been deemed by the state of New Hampshire to be really damaging to children. And I can quite honestly testify that none of those children I taught were damaged. And I think that that is an experience that I can bring to the board, I think also, yes.
I just want you one minute.
Oh, okay. The second thing is my age and I think that nobody else on the board is as old as I am. And with that age, I think comes experience and knowledge of the community of what's happened in the past, like, you know, oh, I know, you had. Trailers out there twenty-five years ago. And I think that that's beneficial to a school board because I believe Kelly may have been the person with the most longevity on the board. And so I think some history is of value. And the third thing that I think I bring to the board. Is that I am connected to the community. I've lived here a long time. I've been invested in the community and I think people value my opinion and perspective.
Thank you.
Sure.
At this point, I'd like to open up for questions and I forgot to look at the Zoom window, so Kim and Del, if you have questions, please let us know. So what direction would you like to see the board focus on or areas we should focus on over the next couple of years?
Well, I do know the curriculum has long been an issue. I know that you have a new assistant superintendent. Who is going to be working on that specific area. I know that the previous director of curriculum came from the school where I was teaching. I know that curriculum is sticky and messy and gross and I was involved with it every year that I taught and so I think I can be helpful with that. Aren't you going to ask me how old my children are?
I told us before, thirty-four.
Well, well, it's actually thirty-four, the other's thirty-seven, but I don't have any children at Bray, at the Richmond School or the High School. So I have no personal bias. I have no axe to grind. I have no immediate concern, but I do have. Two children who went K through twelve in the Dresden School System, Hanover Dresden.
So you sort of alluded to like the ice upon that legislation. So I guess I was just wondering, do you see a way for you to bring your expertise up for Dylan into conversations around diversity, equity and inclusion?
Oh, I would love to have that conversation. I I don't presume that I know everything about everything because I don't. But I do think that there are times that every conversation and certainly the ones about racism and social justice and diversity and inclusion. Sometimes it helps to have someone say, I did this and I don't think you need to be quite so alarmed. And you know, when you're older and you're tall and you can be heard, sometimes people, you know, believe you. And sometimes they don't. I I know that.
No questions? Denver, tell them. Oh, Kim's got one. Go ahead.
Yeah, Rick, you kind of stole one of my other questions, but I guess I'll ask maybe the opposite. Deb, what do you think the board is doing well or the district is doing well?
Well, I think the district has always done a really wonderful job of preparing students for the future and that is in terms of. Graduating well-rounded students, graduating students who are invested politically, invested in matters of social justice. I think that the Ray School in particular and the Richmond School in particular give children a chance to try things that they haven't. Necessarily done at home and to be successful with them. I think that the schools. Have prepared a lot of students very, very well to go on to strong. Second, not secondary careers, but whatever. I don't know if that makes sense.
Thank you. Five minutes is up.
Okay, thank you.
So next up, hold on. Kevin Canoe.
I know a few of you people already. I don't know everybody. I'm Kevin Canoe. I live in Atna. Living in Hanover for about eleven years now. I'm retired from the military. I'm also retired from Crow. To retire. So when I retired about five years ago, after serving public service in a different, various ways, I spent a lot of time volunteering. Since the time of a couple of national committees on engineering, risk for infrastructure and climate change issues. And then I have a son in second grade in the Ray School, so when he started school, I started volunteering more locally. Volunteered as a new parent for the last two years in the school library. Helped out with lecture and science classes in the middle school related to climate issues. And I'm a local college admissions rep and that helped out in the high school, the guidance department with areas of mission issues. It's a couple of different schools. In twenty-twenty, the summer twenty-twenty, when everything was shut down with COVID, everybody started watching school board meetings. I think you maxed out and resumed leadership. A few parents asked me if I was interested in running, a few parents from my son's class and I didn't know what the opportunities were at that time. But I thought more public service locally was something that I was interested in and that I have the time to do. My particular interests here are related to infrastructure, curriculum, special education needs. And things of that nature. The letter I sent to the board is one that I sent as a letter of introduction to parents at the Ray School. When I ran for the school board last spring, so it's really tailored toward as an introduction to other parents who didn't know. Yeah, that's that's why it's written the way it is.
Thank you. So questions for Kevin? Now I'll start. So the same question I asked Deb. Where would you like to see the board focus over the next couple of years as a board member?
So to the interest I expressed in the letter when I was running for the board that came up in tonight's discussion. Were curriculum that Lauren mentioned. She mentioned that initially in a, well, that I heard in a June twenty-twenty school board meeting. When things were shut down with COVID and recognitions on how curriculum issues could be improved to help standardize it more across. Within each grade, but across each classroom within the Ray School. My other primary interest would be on infrastructure facilities as my background. I used to manage a one point three billion dollar infrastructure program in the United States. I have pretty good experience in.
Just kind of reading through your your letter, you talked about other areas of interest in supporting special needs. Can you expand on that a little bit? How you want to help with that?
With what?
Supporting special educations.
So I have a nephew who's autistic. I have friends in Hanover whose kids are autistic. And when I was running for the board, I got emails from two different parents' kids who are special needs kids. Saying that they had interests in what the opportunities were in the school. They had some concerns, but. I don't have a special needs kid here, so I don't actually know how things are running with that right now. I've looked a little up. It's hard to find specific information on that, but I'd be interested in helping with that if I could, if there was an opportunity. I've looked a little up, it's hard to find specific information on that, but I'd be interested in helping with that if I could, if there was an opportunity.
Marcel?
Um, what do you think the direction should be for the diversity, equity, and inclusion?
So I don't know what the committee's actually doing, because their meetings are at four o'clock in the afternoon, which is during the workday, and a lot of people don't have the opportunity to view them. And I haven't had the opportunity to view a single. I did self-nominate for that, but my nomination went after the deadline, because I didn't know how to get the nomination to the appropriate person. When I submitted a letter of interest for that, I said one of the areas I thought should be considered is also economic diversity. My son's best friend is a person of power here in town. He has limited opportunity to participate in certain things just because of economic considerations. So I, I think that's something that we could do a better job of including and recognizing, that not everybody is included, and some people do feel left out of different things within the classroom and in other extracurricular activities we do.
Thank you.
Rick?
Oh, yeah, flipping over to Zoom, hold on. Oh, Kim, go ahead.
Hi.
We got about, we got about thirty seconds left.
Oh, okay, um, so you, um, so Kevin, I, you know, we saw that you ran on the ballot last year, and I believe is the only candidate that we're looking at that did that. Can you kind of explain to us your, um, your experience through that process and kind of what you've learned, you know, from now until then, and in your interest? Thanks.
So my experience in that process wasn't actually very favorable, I mean, just running was fine. I, I'm not a Facebook person, there were, I found out while the day before the election and the day of the election, that there were some posts about me by two specific people who I won't name, because Rick asked not to name names. Stating I had certain political positions, these are people I've never met before, I've never heard their names before, and they never asked me about what my positions were on different things. The positions that they stated for me were incorrect, those were not my positions. And I received a hundred and twenty-seven fairly negative emails because of that, that day, or the night before and the day of the election. And I responded to every single one of those emails explaining what my positions were on the things that I was at. So it wasn't really a great experience, in all honesty.
Thank you, Kevin.
Ever, yeah, thank you.
And Tim?
Hello. I've never spoke, publicly spoke with a mask on, so you can't hear me.
You get used to it.
Yeah. So hello, thank you for letting me speak to you guys tonight. My name is Tim Wanak, I'm a Hanover resident, a fairly new Hanover resident. As my, as I stated in my letter of interest, my main reason, my main interest in serving on the board is that my oldest daughter just started here at the Ray School in kindergarten. And she'll soon be followed by my son. So broadly speaking, I want to be more involved in my kids' education and in the community that I'm new to, somewhat new to. Schools are where communities come together, where family relationships are built, where young people are socialized, where they learn, and where they enter the larger world. Schools are our greatest commitment we have to this idea of the public good, to the greater good. These are pretty challenging times, as I wear a mask and talk on Zoom. And this is especially true for children, especially young children, and people that teach them to make sure they're safe and in a comforting environment. The pandemic has made things that are unique and special about our community challenging, and I think that the school board, more so than the state legislator, so the select boards are the most important entity to address a lot of the challenges. I want to contribute my experience and insight in coalition building, working with various stakeholders at times, often conflicting stakeholders, resolving conflicts, solving problems, building relationships across various differences. I've experienced labor relations, civic engagement, community organizing, the overall goal of improving public services. And I want to serve on the board, support those who teach, and parents and teachers, and my time is up. So thank you for letting me speak briefly, and hopefully I can provide some.
Thank you. So again, I'll send a question, what would you like to see the board focus on, the board focus on over the next couple of years?
Well, I think, I mean, the quick answer for a couple of years is sort of a broad COVID assessment. What have, what have we gone through, what are we gonna go through in future pandemics, evaluating what went right, where proof is needed made? I think two of the topics I would have come here to talk about, or to answer your question that I've often brought up in this meeting, revolve around curriculum development and turnover, and having a qualified workforce. I think both those issues, there's a need for more community engagement. Community engagement can be tense, it can be contentious, and that's, that's good. It's public schools, it's public school district. So sort of mapping out what, you know, learning from COVID, preparing for the next challenges, and then specifically with curriculum development and turnover.
Marcel?
What do, what do you think the direction of the EIC should be in the future?
So, to be honest, I don't have a strong grasp of where it is right now, but I know it's a, it's an important topic in general, but also, like many things, sometimes a contentious topic. So sort of temperature check might be what I think, and maybe that's already happened, or maybe it's happening, but figure out the various stakeholders, if you will, parents, of course, teachers, students, especially high school students, and then the larger community taxpayers. And what is their interest in potential involvement, potential opinions on this kind of topic, and what does it mean? I mean, it's kind of a broad term, so I obviously have some learning to do on what that term means, and what it means that broadly at a public school, and specifically at a public school and a public school district, excuse me, like we have here in Norwich, New York.
John? I think this is the first time you've been back, so is this the first meeting you've attended?
Uh, in person, yes. During the pandemic, I was a participant in a couple, not participant, observer in a couple of the.
Thank you.
Ben?
Yeah, which, you've been on previous boards, which ones, and how has your experience been on those boards?
Not school boards, but a couple of different worker and business coalition boards. The one that I was most involved in was the New Orleans Worker Resource Center, I believe is what we called it, or what it was called shortly after Hurricane Katrina, so it was assessing workforce development needs in the way of, in with rebuilding in the air. And it was, it was quite contentious, quite difficult, but also, as you may know, after Katrina, a lot of confusion. It was more of a clarifying, you know, people coming together to figure out what's going on, a clarifying activity.
Thank you, Tim. Last but not least. Stuart Gray.
I'll follow Tim's lead and sit down. Hi, everybody, my name is Stuart Gray, we've been in the Hanover area for four years, and just here in Washington D.C. area. I've been in patent law for about twenty years now, which seems like forever. I have a particular focus in biotech, medical license, and with that, I think I bring to the table their technical credibility. My focus and what I think can bring to the board is the ability to help interpret potential legislation that may affect the DEI committee, not necessarily advocating for becoming a activist for a certain cause, but allowing the board and the schools to properly identify the hot button issues that legislative has put in, so we can properly fall under the, say, on the good side of the sector of education. I think that's the biggest hot button issue coming up for our school system, as well as school systems around Hampshire and the rest of the country. I think we could be a early mover in satisfying those who are pushing certain agendas, and those that want to limit certain agendas, and find that medium, everybody happy and at least on the right side of the ball. Beyond that, one of the reasons why I like Hanover, we moved up here, the first experience I had with the Ray School, and that's my personal bias, we've got three kids here, fifth, yeah, fifth grade, second grade, and kindergarten, was with Ms. Amri. When I met with her and we talked about our experiences back in Virginia together, she's a college student, but someone from my group. But it was such a welcoming experience for myself and my oldest daughter, that I knew the community involvement in Hanover, and especially the Ray School, was so welcoming, and I just want to make sure that is a continued opportunity for all.
Thank you. At this point, I'll open up for questions, and I'll start with my normal question. What, where do you see the board to be focusing over the next couple of years?
Well, I'm gonna repeat what everyone else has said, curriculum. My focus is science curriculum, convention, entrepreneurship, entrepreneurial, making money. So I think the board has an opportunity to continue curriculum in a science and a a translation from bench research to either products, or healthcare, or whatever you're into. I think it's an important opportunity that the board could tap into with the resources in Hanover. The, the ability for parents to be involved, which are pretty high, uh, high achieving parents, a lot of those fields needed to be pulled in as well. And facilities.
Marcel?
Um, you mentioned, you used the word activism to sort of describe one of the pitfalls that might, you know, fall before the DEI committees. So can you talk a little bit more about that, and how you imagine it's your direction?
I'm not an activist, so I respect those that push whatever agenda they, they have a personal affection for. But I think whatever people put forth needs to be properly molded and applicable to both current society and legislation. So those who want to push one side or the other, and somewhat indifferent, but I think being practical and pragmatic about how any idea gets implemented is very important.
Yeah?
Yeah, so what committees would you be most interested, or think you'd be most helpful serving?
Well, I have a lot of experience in reading boring federal regulations and interpreting statutes. I think any lawyer might know that, if you have played in the patent world at all, you understand how dry some of that can be. I can do that. Budget, I can do budget stuff. One area that I really like, I've been reading on the agendas recently, is facilities. I ran track back in the day, and I have some experience with track facilities and athletic facilities, so I'm very interested in that as well.
Yeah.
I'll follow up with a, same question I had before, again, nice to meet you. Well, we've seen each other in the Crowe State, Charlie. Can you talk about your experience with this board, you know, whether, again, recognizing that we've been on these screens for the last year and change?
Very little experience, let me be honest with you. I attended via Zoom a few of the board members' board meetings last year, because I was interested. A little birdie once told me, when I first showed interest in the school board, this person gently said, give it some time, give it some time, it's a big commitment. And so I, I stood back for a while. But now with this, what I call a trial period of an appointment, I think it's a much easier bite for someone to get into.
Thank you. I want to thank all the people that have volunteered to serve on this board. It's a, it's a very impressive, and we have five nominees, we actually had six, but one person had to step down because of a new job that he had to take. So I truly appreciate your civic-mindedness, and, uh, I hope that even if you're not nominated or not selected, that you still consider running for the board. We have elections coming up, so, and I'm sure there'll be some openings this next year, so thank you. So we're gonna move on to business requiring action. So we're gonna do a motion by consent, but before I do that, I would like to give Kelly McCall a few minutes. She wanted to say some departing words before she could come to teach.
Thanks, Rick, I have two minutes, right? So I, excuse me, you guys have my letter of resignation, so you can read it. I actually decided not to come tonight because I was afraid I might cry, it is definitely bittersweet. I am excited to take on this role and to work with the kids, and I just, I love teaching French, so I, you know, that was an opportunity that I, I couldn't turn down. And I'm excited to get to do that, but I'm also just so proud of the work that we have all done over the last six and a half years. And I've listed all of the administrators that we've hired, and I'm not even sure I got the count right, I think I lost counted at about eleven. The pandemic that we have navigated, the policies that we've dusted off and revised, thank you, Ben, especially for that. So, and the budget work, Kim, always a huge thank you, and Jamie. So I'm just so proud of everything that you all are doing. And I'm sorry to step down so abruptly, that was not, never my intention. So, and I just wanted to, you know, I have three kids in the, or two kids now in the schools, three kids who've gone through the schools, and they are just thriving, they are flourishing, and they have gotten so much out of the programming that you all are providing. And my oldest has gone on to a private school for basketball. I like to call that out, because that is exactly why he's gone there, he has D-one aspirations, and so we made that choice. But he is just soaring, pardon the pun, but soaring in terms of his academics. And, you know, he feels so prepared for this new world that he's headed into. He is curious, he's an independent learner, he has learned to manage his time, and he just feels so well-prepared for this, these next steps, and going to school with people from all over the country and all over the world. So I think for me, that's been a, a real proof of the quality of what we as a district have provided to him, so, and to all, to all of our kids, there's work to do, certainly, but I just, I feel really proud and grateful to have been part of where we've been able to get so far. And I really look forward to the wonderful work that you guys are gonna keep doing with the strategic plan. And I definitely plan to be involved, so if you need me, you know, call me in, so, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, Kelly, we're gonna miss having you on the board. I am now the longest-serving Hanover School Board member.
Congratulations, Rick.
Thank you, to my crowning achievement. Any comments for Kelly? Kelly, I think at some point, we'd all like to get together at what used to be Salt Hill Pub, whatever it's called now, for, for a little celebration, so we'll set that up later.
Sounds good.
Okay. So at this point, we have expenditures, minutes, non-public minutes, the budget guidelines, which we discussed earlier in Kelly's resignation letter, and would someone like to make a motion, make a sense? John?
Vote to approve items B through F by consent.
On the second? Ben? All those, I actually got people on Zoom, so we'll do it this way. Ben?
Kimmy, yes.
John?
Yes.
Marcelo?
Yes.
Kim?
Hart Minia.
Kelly? That was, that was a joke. Johnson, yes, okay, so. So at this point, we're gonna move on to appointment of new board members, and again, this is kind of new territory for us, because we've got two positions to fill. So what we're going to do is someone will move to nominate an individual, there'll be, this will be the position to replace Brittany Joyce for a one-year school board position until the March eleventh. for a one-year school board position until the March elections. We'll then have a discussion, if there is any discussion, and then I'll just take a vote. If that person receive a, a majority, we will then move on to the second position. Okay, so do I have anyone who would like to move one of the candidates we heard from today?
I can move, right?
Everyone has a move. How do we do this? We're concluding motions. She's a parliamentarian.
So I would have had a suggestion prior, but it seemed a little odd to vote on each one of them individually. Because let's see, like, what if three of them, what are you going to do? Sort of going to half and draw one?
No, that's, that's the, the problem with this public requirement is it makes it difficult.
What if you, what if, is it legal? I don't know this, but we've done this in the past somewhere else, not here. If you, if you put each one of the person's names down and then if each one of the board members individually ranked them from one to five and then one person takes all of those numbers that puts them together.
They say that is the best way to go, okay?
And that way it shakes out on who rises to the top two spots.
We can do that a lot.
Yeah, I just don't know if that's considered open and public. So Jay, are you there?
If you make the list public?
Yeah, make the list.
I am, Rick. I, I do know there's a prohibition against secret ballot.
Rick, are you allowed to just have a private discussion and then vote publicly?
No, good, uh, so I'll read you the pass. So that's what we initially were thinking of, so we could have an open discussion, but filling a vacancy of an elected or appointed public office is an appointment and is not the hiring of a public employee. Interviews and deliberation on filling a vacancy in an elected official therefore must occur in public session. It's a case law, Lambert versus Belkamp County. Two thousand seven.
But it doesn't say put the lists on board dogs after we, it doesn't say you can't list the five names behind you and each one of you give
That's true.
One of them a number from one to five.
And then we move after that.
And then if you have a tie, chat it out.
Well, probably should have gave this one out a little better. Usually we only have one nominee for one position, so this, this is very exciting. So Jade, does that sound right to you?
Um, I guess you, you could. As long as it's, as long as it's open, Robert's Rules of Order, uh, Robert's Rules of Order is pretty strict in, in terms of nominating. Uh, and it's typically done the way you said, Rick. It's, uh, it's typically the nominations come from the, the board. And each nomination is taken individually. And, um, I mean, that would, that would put it on each board member to vote. You know, vote their conscience for each, each of the candidates. So, um, but I, I don't see any prohibition. It's really not specific. It doesn't tell you a specific way to vote. It just, uh, it just prohibits a, a, a secret ballot.
Private, yeah, private discussion. So.
Ben? Is there a certain percentage, like, were five people to nominate three, or did they need four or five?
Majority.
Isn't it straightforward?
And even if it did the rank order preference, then you could still move second to each one of the two.
So. Kelly?
Uh, Kelly, yes. Kelly McConnell, Member of the Public. Um, I, I, I think so, I think tech, technically, if, if, say, for example, John were to make a motion that, um, I don't know, pick, pick a random name, be selected as a new board member, um, some, you don't need a second for that, and then each board member would vote. I think that's the, the traditional way to do it. I don't know that you can't do the ranking, but I think that would be. Um, and so people supported that candidate, then you have one done. And if, if there's not a majority, then you wait for other motions.
Just go down through the list. Okay. I think that probably makes the most sense, so. Yeah.
Wait, what? Just repeat what you said.
So what Kelly is saying is we move a name, we vote. We move another name to vote.
So only if someone made a motion for that person though. So you're not going to go down all five necessarily unless you, you, until you, so you would go until you filled those two seats.
Because right now I have four people who want to make a motion, so I don't know how I.
During the chair, you pick.
Yeah, it's true. Okay, so. So.
Sure.
Let's go back. We're gonna, we're gonna just do what we discussed, uh, and I think this is the, you know, probably the clearest way to keep us from not getting in trouble is have someone move to nominate an individual. And then we'll take a vote and then we'll move to the, if that person doesn't get three or more votes, then we move on for another nomination. So at this point, would someone like to move to nominate a candidate to fill Brittany Joyce's spot?
In very good.
Yeah. I'm gonna, Kim, go ahead.
So we're making a motion to move a candidate, correct? I just want to make sure I followed. Yes, okay. Um, I move to nominate Deborah Bacon Nelson to serve, sorry, I lost my. As the new Hanover School Board member replacing Brittany Joyce for one school board position until the March twenty, March twenty-two elections.
But then yeah, we don't need a second or discussion, we just take the vote?
No second is required.
Okay, so at this point, moving on, voting on Kim's move, uh, uh, motion. All those in favor of Deb Nelson serving on the board?
So we're not allowed to discuss at all? This is very.
Jay, can we, can we discuss?
I don't think there's any, any prohibition against discussion, as long as you follow the, the guidelines that you gave at the beginning of the meeting about people's reputations.
Yep, thank you. So do you, yeah, I, I think having a discussion if someone wants to point out.
The one thing I would like to clarify is that speaking only for myself, I have no knowledge of the background of any of these five exceptional candidates. I've never met anything of the person to my knowledge. Just want to make that clear and I think we'd be great if every board can make a similar statement or not.
Sure, I know a couple people from town. Don't have that strong relation or strong feelings towards anyone in particular?
All right, so I do not know Stuart or Kevin. Nice to meet you. I do know Olivia, Deb and Tim. I have answered questions about my experiences on board. I am friends with Deb as well. We work together in various capacities.
Thank you. Kim?
I guess I don't really know anybody. If that's what we're doing. I, I have met in conversation and I've answered questions after deliberative sessions related to the school board. So I know that those who have attended, but, um, nope, welcome and thank you for your interest.
So, and this is Rick Johnson. I've met Kevin several times. My son applied to West Point. I think that's the first time we chatted, just getting that coordinated. And I think last fall or two falls ago, we chatted again about West Point. And then, um, one of our friend's daughters is at the Mabel Academy, we talked about that. And I ran into Kevin at the balloon festival up in Coast Mills this weekend, so. And I've met Deb several times. Actually was chatting with her in the corner at, uh, Centerra yesterday. Protest or, uh, supporting mandates, so, and we've had a couple calls on, uh, the Democratic.
Hanover, Deb.
Hanover, Deb, but I, that's all I, I haven't met Deb personally, and I do not know any of the other candidates I don't know. So. Any other discussion on the, uh, motion? So at this point, uh, I'm going to go around, uh, asking up or down or yea or nay for the motion for Deb Nelson, so. Ben?
Nay. Nay.
Yay.
Then?
You're saying yea and nay? I couldn't really hear what the, what were the other?
Yeah, so Ben said no, John said no, Marcelo said yes. And it's up to you now.
Well, I guess I'll say yea. Yes, Hartman, yes.
I said no, because I'm having a hard time with yea and nay. So, uh, so Kim, uh, yes, and Johnson, yes. So, uh, that is a majority for Deborah Nelson to serve on the board. And now we will move on to.
Does she get to vote as the next person now?
No.
That's a good question.
Well, actually.
That's a really good question.
So Jay? This is really complicated. So now is Deb officially a board member or does she have?
She has to be sworn, she has to be sworn in.
She has to be sworn in still, so she's not, she has to come in and do some paperwork and all that. And that, that doesn't happen tonight. Okay, so we're going to move on to the second motion. Uh, appointment to fill Kelly McConnell's seat for a one-year board position until the March twenty-two election. Then?
I'm looking to nominate Olivia Garris as the new handover to the board member, replacing Kelly McConnell for a new one-year school board position for the March two thousand twenty-two elections.
For any discussion? So I'm going to go around, uh, I'm going to start with Kim this time. Kim?
Hartman, no, with regret.
Marcelo?
The last, you know, with regret.
John?
Yes.
And we do not have a majority, but.
You have two no's and one yes, so I am voting on that.
Oh, yeah, oh, that's right. I thought you went first. So, uh, Johnson, no, would regret, then?
He is.
So two of them. Okay, do we have a motion for, uh, to fill this slot, then?
I'm looking to review, nominate Kevin Booty as the new handover school board member, replacing Kelly McConnell for a one-year school board position for the March two thousand twenty-two.
Any discussion? You know, John?
Yes, no.
Marcelo?
The last, no.
Then?
Hartman, yes.
Ben?
Kimmy, yes.
Johnson, yes. So I think we have our two positions filled. Congratulations, Deb and Kevin. And a, as I said, this is, this is a really weird situation tonight, uh, and it's very tough doing this in public. It's, uh, I'm really uncomfortable and I truly appreciate everyone who took the time to, in the effort to put their names in. And I really hope you will consider running in the election coming up in March. So, thank you very much. Okay, so the next position is to sign committees, uh, to the new board members. I'm going to hold off on that because I'm sure you're all remembering. Yeah, so what we're going to do is we have a Excel spreadsheet. I will remove Kelly and Brittany's positions. You, I'll send it to you. You can take a look. Let me know if you can fill one of the empty positions. That would be great. If you're really, uh, uh, desirous of taking a position that's already been filled by another one, let me know. We can see if we can, uh, figure out a way to, uh, move people around. I can tell you right now, just based on Kelly and Brittany leaving, we have a need for Dresden Evaluation Committee, Central Staff Development Committee, Policy Committee and the liaison to the New Hampshire School Board Association, which is actually a very important role. Brittany carried that for, um, a couple months before she stepped down. And then I know Brittany served as Secretary for the Dresden School Board and the Secretary for the SAU School Board. Kelly served as one of the chairs of this Dresden School Board. So, uh, we're going to be probably moving people around over the next couple of school board meetings as we nominate new chairs and other positions, so. So I will send you both emails with the spreadsheet. Just let me know what, what you would like to do. So we reported the chair. Our next school board meeting for Hanover scheduled for Wednesday, October thirteenth. Jamie, do we anticipate any need for? I know with the budgets going on and stuff, we don't anticipate a special meeting.
I may anticipate a very quick special meeting prior to the Dresden meeting based on conversation regarding transportation that we're going to do.
So that, so before the Dresden meeting in September?
Yes.
So will this convene for five, 10 minutes before the? So right now, we're very busy in the budget process. Kim is doing a great job leading that. I've been involved with negotiations for the teachers' union and the support staff uni- union negotiations. That'll be one of the positions I would like someone to take over. Because I'm flat out with that in the strategic plan, so I'll also include that on this committee. And that's all I have to report. Committee reports, does any of the committee chairs have anything at this point? Great, superintendent's report, Jay?
Thanks, Rick. I've spared everyone the video tonight. I'm not feeling very well. I, I have a couple of things I'd like to say. First off, I really, really, really want to thank Kelly McConnell for her years of service. Not just her service as a school board member, but the fact that she chaired, since I've been here, essentially chaired Hanover now and then Dresden. And, um, the superintendent and the board chair work very closely together. Developing agendas, dealing with, um, the issues of the day that happened to arise throughout the year. And Kelly's been a great partner. And Kelly, I really miss working with you. I've been really, really fortunate to have a great board. I've told the board before, I can't believe the hours you put in and the amount of work you do and, and the, just the set of knowledge and skills that you each bring. And, um, it's, it's not like any board I've ever worked with before. And, uh, I, I guess, uh, following on that, I, I'm really impressed that we had five candidates step forward. That's more than I think we've ever had for an election. So to have that kind of interest and to have people who care that much about, about the community schools is, is really impressi- depressive and it's also, um, it's also encouraging. We have a lot of work ahead of us. Uh, we, we really have re-ded- rededicated ourselves to a strategic plan. To some of the comments made early in the meeting by one, by two of the speakers. We are engaged in, in serious curriculum work at this point. We do have Robin, who's, who's doing amazing work, uh, as recently as today. To achieve that and that along with the work that we'll be doing in facilities as we think about what we need from our schools over the course of the next several decades. It's just an exciting time. So, um, so I want to thank all five candidates and, and especially welcome our newest Deb and Kevin. I'm looking forward to working with you and, uh, would invite you to contact my office. I'd love to meet with you just to kind of, uh, share. Uh, share whatever information that you might need from me, but also to kind of give you a little, uh, a little more information about what it's like to work, uh, not on one board, but three. Um, and, and kind of bring you up to speed on the initiatives that are currently underway. So, um, we can certainly reach out, contact Ryan in my office and we'll, we'll hopefully be able to plan a meeting soon. And other than that, um, I, I just love the start we're off to. As Lauren mentioned, it's not exactly how we, how we pictured it. But everyone, as they did all last year, are doing a wonderful job adapting. And we'll look forward to an improvement in the pandemic and we will continue to keep each other safe. So, thank you all. And we'll look forward to an improvement in the pandemic, and we will continue to keep each other safe. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Jay. Any questions to come up to Jay? Okay, moving on to Robert.
Okay, well, I was so happy to hear people talking about curriculum tonight. And I'm happy to report that now that the summer has passed and I have time to actually get prepared to start working on the curriculum and try to leave some COVID behind us, that today we had our first joint county school, area cross school, meeting about curriculum. So, this afternoon, we met, we're two schools together at area cross. And we reviewed, I went through the curriculum Google Drive that you put together for each school and each grade level and each subject area. It's gonna be a common area for us to be able to house curriculum for the district. We reviewed the templates that we're using. We have a unit template, we have a long-range planning template, and a lot of that work is thanks to Lauren and the working of the grade school and to the, the middle school and other schools that have been using, improved on the atlas previously. A lot of that information has been combined and put into the, the long-range planning framework and the unit framework, so we talked about that. As you know, we had some summer curriculum work that took place. So, we had presentations from two area cross teachers who talked about the work that they did, started from scratch this summer, working on some language arts curriculum. And then we also had a presentation from our fourth grade team from the grade school, who have presented their long-range plan and all the work that they've already put into that over the past few years. So, it was just so exciting. People were enthusiastic. And we begin our release day next Thursday. We'll have our first release day with the first grade team from both schools. We'll be meeting together and, and getting that work underway. There's already work that's been done, it's really good work. And so, I'm looking forward to this being not an easy process. And it will not be done in a year. I've been saying to people, this is a long-range plan. It's going to take us three to five months to get to a really big point in the curriculum. Right now, we're documenting what's happening, and then we'll move on to K through 12, vertical and horizontal alignment. Really excited about that work, and hopefully COVID will pay in our schools, and I'll actually be able to get it done.
So, I have another question, but can you use the figures on, on meeting deficiencies, things like that? Like when the curriculum changes or the dress, like are you, are you, and change better needed? Any need changes? I remember there's proficiency scores.
So, I will ask you, if you have questions or concerns, please write for Robin in an email or set up a meeting. We're not gonna have a discussion about curriculum at a, at a school board meeting tonight.
He does not always answer. Now, by Robin, by others.
I promise that.
Thank you, Robin. So, yes, you were starting with COVID, so how, are we still in a kind of wait-and-see with masks and everything else?
No, we are fully masked, and we will.
Well, that's what I meant, but I thought they were initially gonna make a decision.
Yes, we had our meeting, and we are continuing with masks definitely at this point, so.
And what are, what are the background rates in Raton right now in winter, really?
I mean, it's fluctuates. We've had some losses and then some gains, so, but it's, it's really, it's remain high all throughout the state, so. It's still concerning, and hospitalizations have been increasing in different areas. So, we're continuing to watch it closely. We'll have another meeting in two weeks. And so, we'll just keep seeing what's going on in the schools where, like I said earlier, the summer, we will continue to just monitor COVID situation, and we'll make changes on a as new basis. And we'll meet, you know, quickly if we need to make any changes.
And then this note here talks about substitute class. Is that something you were gonna address tonight?
Talks about what?
It says impossible substitute class will be discussed.
Oh, yes, okay, so we are offering some possible substitutes for the curriculum release days, but I'm, there also have been issues, as you all know, trying to get substitutes and add what amount of substitutes. So, one of the things that I've been working at with the high school is to try to think about some creative ways that we might not need to have substitutes for the days. So, some of the release days that they already have, we're trying to schedule some time during those days. So, hopefully we'll save some money in the year as well.
Okay. Any questions to them?
I have a clarification question that was prompted by Rob Melvin, that's sort of for you. About a year ago, the board was asked to be substitute, to put ourselves in the substitute teachers list. Is with Kelly McConnell leaving, that, like, should we take ourselves off, or that it's?
I think Kelly is a long-term sub. I think if you're just a part-time or?
It's like a one-off.
Yeah, I think that's fine, right? But if you become a long-term sub, you're actually a school employee. Maybe that was their plan, is to get us all kicked off the board. Any other questions for Robin? Keep on forgetting, Kim, you're good, okay? So at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to our business inventory team.
Yay, okay. So, in the, time is passing by here. As you can see, many of the transportation.
I'm just letting them know. Feel free to send me an email.
Yes, please, thank you.
So, we've been having employee shortages in many different realms. We spoke about custodial realm earlier tonight. There's also been employee shortages in the food service realm, even with some of our vendors. At two of our schools, our high school, there was issues here that I believe they're hiring. They shouldn't shut up this room, yes? Not yet, okay. There's also shortages at the high school with employees. We thought we were gonna have to, we were gonna be short at the Richard Middle School as well, which is our own self-fought. But that worked out at the very, like, the day before we opened. Thank God that the chef there has friends, wanted to be serving food. So, I think I'm helping. I like, okay, I do have background in food service. So, we are working through those. I have had meetings with cafe services, and they are in the process of hiring to fill the positions that we have. Transportation. So, transportation this year, last year was a Rubik's Cube from Hack, and it was never-ending nightmare every single day that we were open. So, after COVID year of transportation, we thought, oh, it's gonna be so much easier the next year out. We're not gonna have to do, you know, student tracing and check the temperatures and bus monitors and checking our kids. Well, we are an amazing place to be, and a ton of people moved in. I think all the houses in Hanover that sold, sold candles. And so, everybody, no, I shouldn't say we. We had a banner year of folks requesting transportation services, which, on the one hand, is amazing, because that means our buses aren't rolling empty, right? On the other hand, it makes it difficult when you come in with the same amount of routes that you had pre-pandemic, based on ridership then. And you realize in the middle of August, after you received more than 700-plus requests for transportation services, that, oh my God, I don't think we're gonna have enough assets to pick up all these students. And that's exactly what happened right around August 17th, as I was going through all of the early requests off of a survey that I haven't sent out to my office. And then we did the InfoSnap email whereby we asked people to sign their students up to matriculate the schools, and it also asks about transportation. And those came in even higher than my initial survey. So, we got very creative with trying to accommodate many different needs. We had one section in location in Hanover where I had 93 seats to try to fit on a bus that holds maximum 78, if you put three at a seat, which we never do. So, normally I would put 52 to a bus, unless they're really little, little ones. We might put three in the front, couple of seats, but I never don't like to either. So, we started the year with our full complement of the amount of buses that we would have normally needed in any of the other three years I was here, based on the ridership. To add to that, there is a national shortage of drivers, okay? It hasn't got much to do with the level of pay. I don't care, you know, you could pay them $30 an hour, I don't know that we could still find more people, we can try. However, for those people who don't know, we don't own our own drivers, they're outsourced. We don't own our own buses, they're outsourced. I don't have a full-time transportation manager in-house, that's me. So, it's been a challenge. It's been an absolute, if I was to be completely honest, nightmare and challenge at the same time. We got it done right before school's open. We got all the students to school, I think. I don't think we lost anybody. Might have lost somebody at going home on the second day, but we found them. And as we rolled into the school year, the requests just kept coming and coming and coming. We are aggressively and actively looking for more drivers, because we have assets in the way of bus vehicles that we could utilize. And the specific problem is in the morning, because we are having two, sometimes three, depending on the volume, as it, you know, ebbs and flows with activities after school. Getting all of our kids to school on time by 8:00 AM, and by the way, all of our schools start to use that same company. That's a little challenging with one set of buses, okay? We've been able to make it work, but this year, it's, it's tough. So, H10, which is the line corridor, and all of the roads off of the line corridor, is running historically five to seven minutes late every day. We did flip that bus route to see if it would help, and instead of dropping race school students second, because it obviously comes by right to the middle school, so we drop there first. Instead of going around and around and out and over to race school to drop, and then come back out and go down to drop a high school, we said, let's try dropping at the high school first, because then you can somewhat, and, and then you can somewhat, you know, boogie down the back way, cross over off of, like, the road comes out over by residential, comes out right on residential road. So you go that way in this all lights and traffic, right? So we've tried that, and I think we saw it over the last few days, a few days, a week ago. And the race school students are now pulling in, yeah, five to seven minutes late. So knowing all of this, we went back and looked at H10, and I was speaking predominantly about H10, but I think it's, you know, I have shared with the school board, just for the parents who have emailed me about it. I shared with the school board all of your emails and concerns, questions, thoughts. But I've not shared your emails with the public because of your students' information included. I have shared with the school board, however, some information about what the route looked like, what the updated information email was, I sent out to families on the 12th of September. What the route, I would like the route to look like, or we would on 9/20, which is not popular, and I understand why, and I apologize. I wish I had a driving license, I go drive a bus.
Which document is the?
The H10 effective of 9/20/21.
No, that's probably.
So what that does, because here's the situation, right? We have, probably my fault, because I like to accommodate people. We have, since I got here, expanded more personalized services, whereby if we have time and we're going by, we'll try to allow a stop as close to the home as possible, especially when they're young students, okay? Because by law, and people hate to hear this, but I'm sorry, it's the truth, and I'm not trying to be flip or difficult, we don't have to transport our high school students, and you don't have to transport anybody within two miles of the school, okay? Which brings in another question for the board, because I need guidance. We have a whole route that almost every single rider on it is within two miles to a school, and that's all we want. Won't be a popular idea, I brought it up four years ago. But that would give us another bus and driver, right? But, you know, I, I don't really wanna go there, but I understand one of the parents saying, well, look, there's a whole route that's within, and he, and they're right, you know? So, I'm perplexed. I'm at a point where I'm stressed and I'm frustrated, and I'm doing the best, not I, us, we, all of us, right down to the school level, we're all doing the very best we can with the assets we have, based on the volume that's been asked of us. So, I get that the poor folks on Montview Drive don't wanna come all the way down that big, huge hill. That's why we expanded that route up Montview three years ago. I get that the poor people on Carriage Lane along with Lindy don't wanna go a mile all the way down to the bottom of that other hill, okay? Because a mile if a kid's gotta walk is a long walk. The only other option that we may have is to start the route 10 to 15 minutes earlier. And that means the poor little kindergartner who needs to get on first, because he lives on the right side of line road, he can drive in fourth line, is gonna be on a bus for a long time, so it can be. You know, and to me, that didn't seem like the right decision to make. So, the reason I said that maybe we shouldn't have a meeting on the 28th prior to the Dresden board meeting is this. There are a couple of ideas that we may be able to embark on after going back and forth today. I need to hear back from the town on one of them. And, and, and as unpopular as the thought would be, perhaps this board and new members who are coming on board need some time to digest all of this and look at it and ask more questions, and let us make, I, I need guidance from the school board to make a decision by the meeting on the 28th that we could roll out perhaps on October 4th. That being said, it will mean, if I can't gain five to seven minutes somewhere on that route, that the little guys coming off of that, that area are gonna lead to the race school five to seven minutes late every day, depending on traffic in Hanover, depending on how many students are arriving, depending on, you know, who knows what number of things might occur? Because there's a lot of areas, right, there is. The other route that we're gonna look at is H1, because it is coming in right at the wire, depending on how many riders are on board. But I really think that one might improve when the, when the bridge reopens, okay? The bridge is closed on the camera center route, they're renewing. So, H1 is having to go out of their way to come down the parade ground, which should be able to resume back to H4. It has plenty of time when it's coming to the school.
Where are we with the Dartmouth College?
Yeah, I've not heard back from them, and quite frankly and honestly, I've not had time to reach out.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I'm like.
So the levers that we can pull to solve this is change the start and end dates for the schools.
Change the start time. Change the start time on the route, right?
Uh, well, start time for the schools, stagger them so we're not having them all at eight o'clock.
That would be wonderful. I don't know that that's feasible right now, but yeah.
Um. More buses.
Yep.
But then a limiting factor, there's drivers.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Is there any advanced transit option?
No.
How about smaller vans like we talked about a couple of years ago?
I still need drivers.
Yeah.
We have, and even with our, listen, even with our special education needs in the district. We have one bus, we've got actually, we've been very, very, um. Say, we think out of the box, trust me, okay, because in order to accommodate special education needs this year. We normally used to be able to do it with one of our smaller buses and we were actually utilizing a Norwich bus to move a Hanover student. In order to accommodate, because there are no available people to hire. Even for private transport.
Is there, I, the other option is to be a little more in adherence to the minimums that we have to do for state law, so. The two miles in, uh, high school, which I know is very popular. Is there an option of dropping the middle schoolers off at the race school and having them? Walk to the, walk to the Richmond School?
Here is, which would get them there on time, because I had one parent ask permission for their fifth grader to do that.
But you know, I assume there's issues with sixth, seventh, eighth graders.
Well, no, this would be, this would be, it would be dropping the race school students coming in off of H-ten. Let them get off at Richmond Middle and walk across to race school.
Yeah, I don't know.
You know, and so we.
I'm just stick on here.
You would need a monitor, but no, we had one parent who already called and asked that, said, can my. Fifth grader get off at Richmond Middle School and walk across from that path? And I said. I mean, technically I probably can't say no, but it's going to start a, you know, it's going to open a piano as well, so, you know. We're going to have a fifth grader unattended walking down a path.
Yeah, I'm uncomfortable with that, but.
Yeah.
So, um, you tell us what you need from the board.
I need a.
If it's money, let us know.
I don't need money, I have money.
That's the problem, we can't.
We need drivers. We need drivers.
So if I become a school bus driver, can I still serve on the board?
Uh, yes, because it's S T A. So yes, you could, and I need one more driver to save H-ten, because I could do a half a route in the morning. And I know the times to get home are unpopular. I can't fix that. I'm sorry. There's fifty-two kids on board and they can't all be first, they can't all be last.
So again, I think for the board, you know, again with our strategic planning is maybe, you know, we've always talked about. Starting later, uh, especially with the high school kids. And maybe that, and I, I don't know where we ever went with that committee, but that would free.
You do a loop system then, so you have.
Okay.
Less riders, less stops.
That's not, yeah, we're not going to solve it in the next two weeks, but we've got to solve this, because I don't think it's going to get better. It will go back to where it's been, which has always been kind of tight and kind of. Um, long bus rides and everything else, so, okay.
So the other thing that I heard might be coming is another route where people actually have a plan to run forward, which is happy to contemplate once it comes. And I don't remember the route number, I have to look at it. I think it's six.
Okay. Any questions for Jamie? Ben?
Rick, Rick, I have a question.
Yeah, hold on. We just, Ben was asking a question.
Full disclosure, I'm involved on H-ten and my kids do not ride the bus at the moment. Um, precisely because I wanted to be less vulnerable on this issue.
Your event changed, because we turn around.
Purely coincident. But it does make me worry because all those roads are so hilly with no sidewalks. I imagine it'd be a huge safety concern in the winter with visibility or anything like that. So what exactly is the, the specific problem? Is it there's too many stops, it's too still because of the hills, it's too long? You can't combine the other buses because it's kind of a weak route? Or what's the, like, why is it that route that's so problematic?
Part of the reason it's problematic is because there are so many stops, because there are so many roads that are coming off of.
It is so spread.
Right. The other part is that, uh, because Lime Road is a, considered a state highway that's posted at fifty miles an hour. You absolutely cannot have children crossing it, even with a parent. So I can't even consolidate, like, the poor little guy that gets on at one eleven, that first thing in the morning, first stop on the right. If I could, you know, start further out at seven and have all the kids on the right side over the left side or something, if they come off. You know, you would pick up some time, right? But I can't because of, we've gone over that with our attorney, like, three years ago, four years ago it was an issue. Um, so. Yeah, and then just the sheer volume of riots.
Jamie?
Yeah.
Can the police department do that? The police department has made people stop in front of those schools, doesn't allow, doesn't allow cars to turn in the crowd and even go down the road to round up camera.
Right, but they can't, each person, we have on Lime Road, for Lime Road stops, I think there's thirty-five stops on Lime Road. Going up one side and coming back down the other. And the other route that runs near that is H-one. It runs, uh, it comes all the way over to Peneo Hill, at the edge of Peneo where it's Dogford. H-one is full. I mean, we're full on H-one too, and that starts way up at Dairy Lane at like ten o'clock.
So, uh, Kim, you have a question?
Um, it's okay. Actually, I think there's a member of the public too with her hand raised.
Yeah, I was, uh, I was going to ask, uh, Jennifer, if she could, is this a specific about, uh, issue with your bus route?
Yeah.
It is. I, I don't know if this is the right time to have a conversation, or you want to save it to another meeting, but.
Yeah, if you could, uh, if you have a question or concern about a specific stop on a bus route or the rats, please, uh, let, uh, the SAU staff know.
Well, I know, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a question about a specific stop. I mean, Jamie and I have been in conversation. For a long time. I just felt like it was important to some point when you feel like it's the right time. Uh, hear from the public and understand the perspective of, you know, the impact this is having, the safety concerns that we all have. Um, questions about, you know, sort of spreading the inconvenience as opposed to consolidating it in our route. And I also wanted to just clarify a couple of things, at least in my memory, um.
Jennifer, uh, I'm, I'm not going to allow the public, uh, to comment on this. I, I will note. Right now that, uh, Jamie does share the emails regarding concerns about the bus, the bus routes with. The school board, so we're well aware of, uh, the parents' concerns and also the, the, uh, issues that we're dealing with. And I would say, I, I would propose that we may want to consider having a public meeting about this in the future. To discuss and, you know, we, we've talked about Dartmouth College helping us do some whole bunch of modeling. Uh, that hasn't gone anywhere, but I, I, I think it may be worthwhile, because this, this, the five years I've been on this board, this has been an issue all five years, so. We, we need to figure out. Uh, you know, and I think having the public maybe have an opportunity to talk, um, but I'm not trying to cut you off, Jennifer, I'm just, uh. Tonight we're trying to just understand the problem, uh, and as I said, we are well aware of the concerns that the parents have had about. Distances, steepness of roads, crossing the highways, all that, so thank you. Kim?
Um, so, I, I totally agree with everything that, that you said and frankly, that probably, that everyone has said so far. Um, I, I just am wanting to make sure. Can we fix a little bit of the problem right now? I mean, can, how troubling is it just to move the times up five minutes if, or seven minutes if that's on average? Just so they're maybe a couple of minutes late versus ten? I don't know. I, is that outrageous? I don't know.
About just this one route?
Well, I'm hearing H-ten a lot, so with being five to seven minutes late and I, I'm just, I just want to maybe fix a little bit and then we can talk about maybe if. It, it just concerns me if, if, I don't want to keep doing something that's not working, I guess.
I don't think this is really a school board decision.
Well, it is in that. The unwritten parameters are, we don't like to start routes before seven o'clock.
Well, that's an unwritten parameter. It's not, it's not school board policy.
Right, so it says in our policy that the school board has to be, has to be, uh, discussed with the school board in order to change. To make sweeping changes to a week. So if, if you guys give me a head nod that I can go ahead and move this seven minutes earlier, then I'll put that out. For September twentieth and leave all the stops the way they are until we can come back together with perhaps, you know, a, a more powerful plan.
Now, have you received comments from parents? Has, has this been floated out there or parents concerned about an extra five or seven minutes?
I have not. I mean, I did put it out in my email, yes.
Yeah.
So if you want to split the difference between fifteen minutes and go seven and see what it, if it improves it. I'm happy to try that.
I mean, I would be just, just as a, and I'm happy to say that this is a short-term stopgap, just to try to make the kids arrive on time. And then that might not be the end-all solution and, and, and if, if there's major pushback, then there's major pushback and we can talk about it, but. I just, I don't want to give you no direction and say we'll talk about it later if it's a problem right now, sorry.
So, Ben?
I also note that the policy itself has not been updated or looked at since two thousand and nine. And I'm happy to move this into the next policy meeting we access to.
It was looked at in October twenty, I think.
Says, uh, well, this was last updated May twenty, two thousand and nine, according to the document you uploaded.
There should be a date further down then, says reviewed October.
Looking at the E, EEA.
Oh, okay. I thought I saw it, said we reviewed on it somewhere. Okay, so good, that's, yeah, then we, I think we need to, as a district, yeah.
It'd be the first one of the year, which I think will be something.
Yeah. So back to Kim's suggestion, are we fit with trying a seven minute earlier for H-ten to see if that alleviates some of the concern? And it's not a permanent change until we actually. Get some data and hear from the parents about any potential concerns, but.
They will probably have new concerns.
It is, but it's a balancing act. It's, you know, you know. Safety, getting to school on time, or being a little longer on the bus, and I know it's not ideal, but, you know, it's kind of a. Bunch of things you got to weigh, so do we want to suggest? Give Jamie a thumbs up and try it for. At least for Dresden meeting where you may have another solution?
I'm very concerned for a driver or anything like that, starting early.
Oh, no, not at all. The drivers can start any time of the week.
So how would you notify the parents?
I'm going to notify them tomorrow morning about the discussion from tonight via email. That's how I know.
They change the time.
So I'll, we'll go back and we'll rerun the route and we post it with the email we sent out saying, you know, this is what the interim. Change is going to be, not the route stops. Until, until, we can be discussing on the twenty-eighth, please send all of your thoughts, comments, questions, concerns, you know. To, to somebody.
Okay, so, Ben?
So the route will be as, as it still was today?
Yes. Well, yes, other than I'm still going to consolidate out Emily Lane. Okay, and Pete's, because those are such small little changes for those.
That one was pretty flat.
Right, yes, and so is Pete's, Heather's, and Piper's, I think. Those are all dead ends. And they're very small and they're short, and they have, and they have older children on them.
Ken, are you, is your hand raised?
So I would, I would restore Montview, Third Lane, Lindy and Longwood.
Those are the ones that the parents have mentioned concerning.
Those are the ones I've heard from most.
And I was the first to.
Darcy, though.
Okay, um, so at this point, uh, can I get a thumbs up? Can we be good? Try it for two weeks, okay? Thumbs up.
Jamie, how much notice are you going to give them? Like, going into effect next week or?
Well, Monday, because they know changes are happening Monday. So I will send it tomorrow. Tell them that instead of the consolidations on this road and this road. Um, this is what we're going to try to see what it looks like, right, in the interim. While if I can, if I can hear back from the town in Peneo Hill, which is very steep going up. If they'll allow us to go up Peneo Hill, I think I'm going to, I may be able to, between that and the changes on. Um, the right side coming down on the short roads. We might be able to pick up that amount of minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, well, that's.
Rick.
Now, Hill does make errors, like, not in a school bus.
Ken?
Um, yeah, and I just, I just wanted to thank Jamie for all of her work on this. I know it is tremendously difficult. And our population changes and, um, the school bus routes kind of have to be flexible every year, no matter what, so, um, I really appreciate.
This kind of leads to, are we staffed properly? This is, you know, trying to orchestrate four schools. Uh, not co-located in a huge trap of land that we've got to cover that we may. During the strategic planning, look at getting a transportation coordinator that can handle this stuff. Okay. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, love.
Um. Okay, so the next is, we're moving into non-public. Um, so we're going to have a short discussion in non-public. We're going to go to the art room. We'll come back in here, go back into public and vote on the personnel issues. And then we'll end. So if you want to stick around, you're more than welcome to, uh, I, I assume it's not going to be a long discussion, it doesn't look like there's a lot of. Hiring that's going to be done. Um. If you don't stick around, thank you, Dan, for coming tonight, and I want to thank the candidates, all of you. Truly appreciate it and, uh, hope you, you still are interested in the service. So at this point, do I have someone who wants to move us into non-public? Ben?
Move to enter the non-public session under RSA minus one, A, three, C personnel.
Second?
Yes.
Ron, uh, Ben?
Keen, yes. But yes.
Well, yes.
Kim?
Hartman, yes. And do you want me to call someone's cell phone?
Uh, yeah, you can call mine.
Or, or do the non-public link. Which one do you want me to do?
No, I just call, just call my cell phone, it's on the messages.
Okay.
And, yeah. At this point, we're going to return to public session and approve the new hires. Do I have someone to make the motion? Dan?
Move to approve the hiring of a first grade teacher and a one-year digital learning specialist as well.
For a second? Dom, going around, Ben?
Katie, yes.
Ken?
But yes.
Kim? And Johnson, yes. Okay, if anyone has any ideas or items that they want included on next month's agenda, please email them to me. And our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October 13th. And at this point, I'd like someone to make a motion to adjourn. John?
Motion to adjourn the meeting at 9:51 PM.
Second? And I don't think we have to go, so, um, we are adjourned at 9:51. Thank you, Kim.
Feel better, Jim?
Hope you feel better.